A city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for June 10th, 2024. Would you please stand as you were able and join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the role of the members?
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Jenny Snell.
Present.
Corey Stites.
Here.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Dan Larson.
Here.
Janice Hoppy.
Rachel Holteem.
And Leah Dozeman will be joining us via Zoom.
Thank you. Councillors, in your packet tonight, you have the study session notes from May 5th of 2024. Are there any corrections to be noted in these notes? Seeing none, we will let the notes stand as prepared with our thanks to the clerk. Are there any changes to be noted in tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we will move to the agenda as presented, and we have several proclamations tonight. I'd like to invite Councillor Jenny Snell to join me at the podium, please. Thank you for being here. All right. This is a proclamation in support of LGBTQ+ Pride Month, June 2024. Whereas the city of Wheat Ridge cherishes the value and dignity of each person and appreciates the importance of equality and freedom, and whereas all are welcome in the city of Wheat Ridge to live, work, play, and every family deserves a place to call home where they feel safe, happy, and supported by friends and neighbors. And whereas the city denounces prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, gender identity, gender expression, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, and physical attributes as an affront to our fundamental principles. And whereas during lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and intersex LGBTQI+ Pride Month, we reflect on the progress we have made as a nation in the fight for justice, inclusion, and equality while reaffirming our commitment to do more to support LGBTQI+ rights. And whereas today, the rights of LGBTQI+ Americans are under relentless attack, and many of these individuals continue to face discrimination and cruel persistent efforts to undermine their human rights. And whereas despite being marginalized, LGBTQI+ people continue to celebrate authenticity, acceptance, and love. And whereas we appreciate the cultural, civic, and economic contributions of the LGBTQI+ community which strengthen our social welfare. Now therefore be it resolved that I Bud Starker, Mayor of the City of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge City Council declare the month of June 2024 as LGBTQI+ Pride Month, and we honor the resilience of the LGBTQI+ people who are fighting to live authentically and freely. We affirm our belief that LGBTQI+ rights are human rights, and we recommend to delivering protections, safety, and equality to LGBTQI+ families so that everyone can realize the full promise of the American dream. Dated this 10th day of June 2024. Jenny, I'd like to present this to you.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Mayor Starker. I just wanted to take a moment to say a few words and acknowledge this is huge for us. This is great for our whole community. I must share that when my wife and I moved here 10 years ago, the minute we got out of that moving truck, we felt welcome. We felt safe. We felt acknowledged, and we felt just like we belonged. And it was part of the magic that is Wheat Ridge, right? We had neighbors attend our wedding celebration that was a few months after we moved in in February. Barely knew our neighbors. They were at our wedding celebration, and it meant so much to us. And from there, we've just grown with this community, and it's so important for me, for my family, for my friends, for youth who are struggling with their identity, and also the youth that are struggling with their identity who don't have the support of their friends and family and who aren't able to feel support and be themselves. These kinds of proclamations are huge and hugely important and really sort of a matter of life and death in some cases. Proclamations like this are so important, but we know that without action behind those proclamations, they're just words. And I'm so proud to say that in the city of Wheat Ridge, we've done so much already. We have, after George Floyd's murder, we created a Race and Equity Task Force because our residents asked us to do that. Our residents worked with Wheat Ridge for Equity, which is our own equity organization in Wheat Ridge to make sure that that Race and Equity Task Force happened. Because of that Race and Equity Task Force happening, and we got to work, we did so much work, presented to council, and council kindly enough took our recommendations, and we're now entering a new next chapter with that, and we will start our idea committee this summer. So that will be a permanent committee within our city to advise on things dealing with diversity, equity, inclusion, accessibility, all the things that really keep our community considering everyone in the community. I just have to acknowledge again, and I know this because I lived it, kiddos sometimes in, when you're growing up, you don't, there's a lot, there's a lot going on in here, there's a lot going on in here, and sometimes when you don't quite understand where you fit in, how you're feeling, who you like, who you don't like, how you want to dress, when you don't have some support network, it is super detrimental for those kids. And so proclamations like this and things that we're doing in the city that are incredibly important, that we're fortunate enough to have a council that actually does those things and listens and then acts, our youth as a whole are going to be better for it. I'm going to close with a quote from one of my heroes, Marsha P. Johnson. She said, among other wise things, she said, "No pride for some of us without liberation for all of us." Thank you so much. Happy Pride.
I'm Morgan Richards with Wheat Ridge for Equity, and I want to thank our very responsive city council and leaders. And June is also Youth Violence and Gun Violence Prevention Month. And people who are queer and people who are of color are disproportionately impacted by gun violence, especially in non-mass shooting incidents. And I want to thank you because the city of Wheat Ridge is sponsoring this Saturday the first Guns to Gardens event in Jefferson County, where guns, people who want to get rid of guns that they no longer need or want, they can bring them to that event this Saturday, June 15th, between 10:00 a.m. and noon, and those guns will be turned into garden tools. And thank you very much for supporting that. That is going to be at the Glenon Heights Menonine Church, which is at 11480 West Virginia Avenue. And again, I'm really proud of the city of Wheat Ridge for taking a concrete action to helping reduce gun violence in our community and the entire metro area. Thank you.
We're going to have a proclamation in support of Wheat Ridge Safety Month, and I want to invite the safety team to join me at the podium. So, safety team, come on up here. Let's go. Get in line. Get in order. Okay, you're looking good. You're looking good tonight. Thank you all for being here. This is a proclamation in support of Wheat Ridge Safety Month, June 2024. Whereas National Safety Month focuses on reducing the leading causes of injury and death at work, on the roads and in our homes, and communities, and drawing attention to safe practices that will decrease the likelihood of accidents. And whereas all community members deserve to live in communities that provide safe and healthy living environments. And whereas, safe communities require the cooperation of all levels of government, business and industry employees, as well as the public. And whereas, through the support and observance of National Safety Month each year, employers are helping to reverse and increase in accidental injuries and deaths in the workplace. And whereas, the city of Wheat Ridge supports safety efforts and has taken a proactive stance in providing a safe and healthy work environment for its employees by supporting the Be Safe Safety Committee. And whereas, the city works to prevent accidental injuries by educating employees about safe and healthy practices in the workplace through training and encouragement. And whereas, the beginning of the summer season, traditionally a time of increased accidents and injuries, is an appropriate time to focus the attention on risk management and prevention. Now therefore be it resolved that I Bud Starker, the mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge City Council formally designate the month of June 2024 as Wheat Ridge Safety Month and urge all community members to establish and to maintain safe practices in their homes, workplaces, and communities. Dated this 10th day of June 2024. So thank you all very much for being here. Going to hand this to you. I'd like to say a few words.
I want to thank you all for letting me come up here and talk to you a little bit about this amazing safety committee that we have here at Wheat Ridge. For those of you that don't remember me, my name is Kelly McLaughlin, and I am the Risk Management Coordinator for the city. And these guys are just so great. So a year ago, we were here, and we were nervously anticipating our first annual safety soiree, which was sort of our big event, kickoff event. And we had no reason to be nervous. As it turns out, over half of our city employees came out. So to give you an idea what it was, as a safety soiree, we bring in a bunch of vendors and they set up safety education tables. We feed people breakfast. We give them safety swag. It was asked last year, yes, safety swag is actually a thing. And we give them all this safety swag. They come out and they just learn a ton of information about how to keep each other safe, how to keep people that come to our city facilities safe, and just how to create a good environment for us. So for those of you that would like to attend, we are doing our second annual one this Wednesday. It'll be at the Anderson Park Pavilion from 8:30 till about 11:00. We will have amazing coffee. We will have waffles to munch on, and then we have a bunch more safety vendors coming out this year, and of course, more safety swag. Although this group is fabulous party planners, they do so many other things that you guys don't see. Over the last year, they have helped redo the city's motor vehicle policy. They went through and redid our workers' compensation policy. They went through and went through our safety manual with a fine-tooth comb and completely updated it and sent it out. Besides doing that, they redid how we did incident reports, safety trainings, how we do our safety walkthroughs, and they helped just centralize our whole safety audit for SIRS. This year, all their hard work resulted in a score of 114 out of a possible 100 points for this audit. So not only does it show what great work they've done, it also saves the city money on our insurance premiums. The thing I think we're most proud of, though, is just the culture that the city has embraced. So we already have a good safety culture, but over this year, the city has just really embraced this. Our little safety bee mascot, he's over here, and things like monthly safety trainings, a quarterly newsletter, has really led to a lot of just increased notice of safety in the city. And our Wheat Ridge PD has just been fantastic partners with us. They provided active threat response training to our city. They did bleed stop training. We even had our safety committee chair, who's our fleet manager, a week after bleed stop training, put that to use and took care of an employee that had been injured in the fleet shop. So it's just been so amazing to see all this come together. So as we go into next year, our two main goals is we have redone the emergency plan and the evacuation plan for city facilities. So we're launching that at the safety fair this year, and we're working on the State of Colorado Cost Containment Certification, which not only helps ensure employee safety, it also helps with our workers' comp insurance premiums. So I could sit here and brag on these guys all day. You guys don't have time for that. So let me just say thank you to you guys for your support, for the executive management team, for all the support that you give safety committee, and just know that it's our honor to serve the city.
I am honored to provide a proclamation in support of Juneteenth, which is June 19th, 2024. Whereas this nation was founded on the principles stated in the Declaration of Independence that, quote, "All men are created equal," that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, but in which people who were black were held in slavery. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, which states that all persons held as slaves within a state or designated part of a state, quote, "shall be then thenceforward forever free," changing the legal status of three and a half million enslaved people who were black from slave to free. And whereas, the Emancipation Proclamation paved the way for the 13th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas, news of the Emancipation Proclamation did not reach the most distant slave states until federal troops arrived in Galveston, Texas on June 19th, 1865, to take control of the state and ensure that all enslaved people be freed. And whereas, the Day of Respect and Remembrance, called Juneteenth, a combination of the words "June" and "19th," is observed as an important day in our nation's history. And whereas, Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day, Jubilee Day, Liberation Day, is a federal holiday celebrated on June 19th. And whereas, Juneteenth commemorates African-American freedom and serves as a reminder of the iniquities faced by Black people throughout our nation's history. Now therefore, I Bud Starker and the city council of the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, call upon the city of Wheat Ridge to join in recognition of Juneteenth, and call upon the people of Wheat Ridge to acknowledge and condemn the history of slavery in our nation and recognize how the impact of America's original sin remains. And I call on every person to celebrate Juneteenth and recommit to working together to eradicate systemic racism and inequality in our society wherever we find it. Dated this 10th day of June 2024. Thank you. We will now go to our public's right to speak. Any member of the public may come forward and speak on any matter that is not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes under our public's right to speak. I have one person signed up to speak. That's here in City Hall, and when I call your name, if you please come to the podium and introduce yourself again, Kathleen Martel. And let us know whether you live or work in Wheat Ridge. And you've got three minutes. Hang on, I'm going to move the podium. Facing the wrong way. There you go.
My name is Kathleen Martel. I live and I work and I play in Wheat Ridge in District One. And I'm going to try and say everything I want to say in three minutes, but I just wanted to take a minute to talk about all the awesome things that have been going on lately and how busy I've been lately in Wheat Ridge and how excited I am about how things have been. I was fortunate enough to celebrate Pride last weekend at Edgewater Pride as part of the Jolly Ranchers and Wheat Ridge for Equity, and also giving free aunt hugs, because I'm not a mom, so I didn't give mom hugs. But it was an amazing day, and throughout the day when I sat, I lived in Wheat Ridge, people were like, "Oh, we heard great things about Wheat Ridge. I love Wheat Ridge." So that was one awesome thing. I also wanted to tell everyone that Panorama Park Sustainable Neighborhoods just had a ribbon cutting last weekend for our Zurich native garden, so come check it out at Panorama Park. And Wednesday is Regenerate Wheat Ridge Session, and last weekend, we had First Friday on 38th, and there was an art show at Art Centric that was all artists from the Wheat Ridge Co-op Art Group. And, let's see, coming up is the Ridge Fest with a lot of great Wheat Ridge artists in the Let's Create Art Show. And also for First Friday at Art Centric, there was live music that was the result of a Cultural Commission grant funds. And later this week, I think seven or eight more Wheat Ridge residents or businesses will be notified of additional Cultural Commission funds that are being distributed and awarded. So I'm just so excited. Oh, and the biggest thing is Friday night, I was so honored to be a part of the group that presented for All America City when Wheat Ridge won our Lifetime Achievement designation from All America City. So it's just been an awesome time in Wheat Ridge, and I'm so grateful to be a part of everything, and I just wanted to say thank you for all the opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now go to Agenda Item Number One. This is our consent agenda. Would Councillor Ohm, would you please introduce these items?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 1A, Resolution Number 27-2024, a resolution approving the First Amendment to an intragovernmental agreement establishing the Jefferson County Regional Crime Laboratory. At issue on May 14, 2013, an intragovernmental agreement was reached between the county of Jefferson, the city of Orvada, the city of Lakewood, and the city of Wheat Ridge establishing the Jefferson County Regional Crime Laboratory in an effort to regionalize forensic crime laboratory services. An amendment to the IGA expresses the desire of the participating parties to create a separate fund for planning for future year capital expenses. Item number 1B, Resolution Number 28-2024, a resolution amending the 2024 fiscal year general fund budget to reflect approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $23,046 for the purpose of accepting grant funds from the Colorado Department of Early Childhood. At issue, the city was awarded $23,046 in federal funding through the State of Colorado Department of Early Childhood's Childcare, Stabilization, and Capacity Building Grant Programs for the SUN Camp and Licensed Preschool Childcare Programs. A resolution approving a supplemental budget appropriation is required to accept and appropriate this additional grant funding. Item number 1C, Motion to Award the Recreation Center Carpet Placement Project to Target USA Incorporated and Improve Subsequent Payments in the Amount of $99,561 with a contingent amount of $9,959 for a total amount to exceed amount of $109,520. At issue, the majority of the modular tile carpeting at the Recreation Center was replaced in 2012. The industry standard for commercial grade carpet replacement is every 10 to 15 years to maintain aesthetics and reduce health allergen impacts. This is also one of the final components of the facility redesign project for Recreation Center.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Consent Agenda Items Number 1A, 1B, 1C.
There's a motion and a second. Would the clerk please poll the council?
I apologize. I think we're going to have to re-vote. And all ayes, no nays, and Councilmember Dozeman has raised her hand as an aye vote. Thank you. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We will move to Agenda Item Number Two. Councillor Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Council Bill Number 08-2024, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 10840 West 41st Place from Agricultural 1 or A1 to Residential 1B or R-1B. This is case number WZ-24-03. At issue, the owner of the property at 10840 West 41st Place is requesting an approval of a zone change from Agricultural 1 to Residential 1B. The zone change will result in a zoning that encourages investment on the site and will enable the land use to become more conforming with zoning.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is not quasi-judicial. It is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, we have a staff presentation on this item.
We do. Elena Olivas-Luera is here at the seat.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Elena Olivas-Luera, and I am a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. I'm presenting case number WZ-2403, which is a request for approval of a zone change from Agricultural 1 to Residential 1B at 10840 West 41st Place. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore city council has jurisdiction. I'm so sorry. That was an alarm. A little late. I'm sorry. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore the city council has jurisdiction to hear this case. The subject property is outlined in red. The property is located on the south side of West Forty-first Place and northwest of the intersection at West Forty-first Avenue and Oak Street. The lot measures about twenty thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight square feet, or just under half an acre in size. And the property currently has a two thousand fifty-eight square foot single unit dwelling built in nineteen oh nine and multiple accessory structures. The property is currently zoned Agricultural One. The adjacent properties to the east, west, and south are zoned R one B and contain low-density residential uses. The property to the north is city-owned open space, which is part of the Clear Creek Green Belt and is zoned A One. This is a view of the subject property looking southeast from West Forty-first Place. And this is a view of the subject property looking southwest from West Forty-first Place. The applicant is requesting the zone change to R one B so they can subdivide the oversized parcel and build an additional single unit dwelling. The existing lot is currently non-conforming and does not meet the minimum lot size requirements for the A One Zone District. This zoning condition was inherited from the county when the city was incorporated in nineteen sixty-nine. By rezoning to R one B, the lot will become conforming and will enable the site to remain consistent with the surrounding area and would not result in significant change to character. This table compares the existing A One and R one B development standards. R one B was determined to be the most appropriate option because it retains the lower-density single unit character of the area and maintains medium lot sizes. The subject site is entirely surrounded by R one B zoning, which contains low-density, single unit dwellings. The R one B Zone District would allow the applicant more flexibility to redevelop the property while maintaining the character of surrounding neighborhoods. It would also allow the site to become conforming as it does not currently meet the minimum one-acre lot size requirement for the A One Zone District. In a subdivided condition, the site would contain two lots, which are compatible in size with surrounding conditions. With over twenty thousand square feet of lot area, the subject property could accommodate two single unit lots that exceed the minimum lot area requirements of R one B. As a requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three in a virtual Zoom meeting setting. Three people attended the meeting, and the notes from the meeting were included in the staff report. Since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, including fire, water, and sanitation, as well as completed an internal review. We did not receive concerns or objections from internal departments or outside agencies. Before the hearing, the property was posted for fifteen days and letters were sent to occupants and property owners within a six-hundred-foot radius. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the request on April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Staff received no comments from members of the public on Wheat Ridge Speaks prior to this hearing. Staff reviews zone change requests based on several criteria and consistency with the city's comp plan. The subject site is identified as Neighborhoods, a designation reserved for areas where residents of all ages can live safely and comfortably. Defining characteristics of an established neighborhood in the comp plan are consistent character, mature landscaping, high rates of reinvestment and dwelling ownership, consistent maintenance, and high desirability. City goals that are met with the zone change proposal include encouraging reinvestment in the property, maintaining consistent character, and creating opportunities for more housing options. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the request for the following reasons. Based on the character and land use patterns in this area, the R one B Zone District is most appropriate to maintain the existing character of the neighborhood and to accommodate the applicant's proposal for the revitalization of the property. For that reason, the zone change should not have an adverse effect on the surrounding area. Staff finds a zone change to R one B is supported by the city's comp plan Neighborhood Designation and will allow for the preservation of the low-density and mid-size lot character of the neighborhood. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we go to questions from council, this time is set aside for the public to speak on this item. I have no members of the public to speak at this time. So we will go to questions from council of staff. Are there any questions of council on this item before I close the public hearing? And if you want to tell staff what a great job they did on this, this is the time that you should do it. We're not going to do that during the motion. So I'm going to close the public hearing. And Counselor Weaver, a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number Zero-eight dash twenty-two-four, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at ten eight four zero West Forty-first Place from Agricultural One to Residential One B. On second reading, order it published and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication.
We have a motion and a second by the mayor pro temp. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counselor Weaver.
I just want to thank the staff. No, I walk by this property all the time. It's very close to my house. And I think this is just a great way to bring a property into conformance? Confirming? Into conformance. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Counselor Larson?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And I have to say that this is about as open and shut a case as you can imagine. And it's not quasi-judicial, but it is a quasi-no-brainer. I mean, this thing is just, if there was ever a candidate for proper rezoning, this would be it. And one of the concerns that was raised at the neighbor meeting was whether if the lot subdivided and then sold, the buyer would approach the city about rezoning for something else. And the comment that was made at the very end of that response was zone change to anything other than R one B would, to support more density, would not be supported by staff at this location. I think that kind of says it all, that it does lay to rest the concern that some neighbors have that, you know, down the road, something might happen that they didn't agree to or they didn't see coming at this time. And so I appreciate the clarity in that statement. And I do support this.
Thank you. Just for the record, this is quasi-judicial.
Okay.
So are there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Will the clerk please poll the council? Okay. Thank you. We will now move to Agenda Item Number Three. And Counselor Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number Zero-nine, twenty-two-four, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at parcel ID thirty-nine dash one nine three dash zero one dash zero ten from Agricultural One, A One, to Industrial Employment, i.e., case number WZ twenty-four zero four. At issue, the subject property is an isolated parcel at the far northwest corner of the city near Forty-fourth Avenue and Holman Street. Coagent Companies is requesting approval of a zone change from Agricultural One, A One, to Industrial Employment, i.e., to allow the site to be utilized for outdoor storage. The zone change will result in a zoning designation that would allow for use of the property unless and until it is developed as right-of-way.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is quasi-judicial. It is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Elena is still at the podium, so I think she's up.
Okay. Me again. My name is Elena Olivas-Luera, and I am a planner with City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. I am presenting case number WZ twenty-four zero four, which is a request for approval of a zone change from Agricultural One to Industrial Employment at parcel ID three-nine dash one nine three dash zero one dash zero one zero. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the City of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met. And therefore, City Council has jurisdiction to hear this case. The subject property is outlined in red. The property is located on the north side of Highway Fifty-eight, south of West Forty-fourth Avenue, and immediately west of one four four five two West Forty-fourth Avenue. The lot measures about one hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-nine square feet, a little over four acres in size, and is currently vacant. It is owned by Longspreek Metropolitan District, or LPMD, which is the metro district associated with the nearby Clear Creek Crossing development. This is a zoning map of the area. The property is currently zoned Agricultural One. This zoning was established in two thousand and nine when the property was annexed from the county to the city. This is a map of the county zoning. The property is situated in the northwesternmost corner of the city and is surrounded by properties within unincorporated Jefferson County. Adjacent uses are light industrial to the east and west and residential and commercial to the north. This is a view of the subject property looking south from West Forty-fourth Avenue. And here is, again, looking southeast from West Forty-fourth Avenue. And the applicant's property and building can be seen to the left. This is a view of the property looking north from Highway Fifty-eight. The applicant's property and building, again, can be seen to the right. The subject parcel and this zone change request relates to the history of Clear Creek Crossing. The Clear Creek Crossing project dates back almost twenty years. In two thousand and six, Cabela's and Coors owned much of the land, and development was proposed to span both sides of Clear Creek. In the original proposal, development would have required significant infrastructure investments, including a hook ramp on I seventy, which is the one that was recently constructed, and also a hook ramp on Highway Fifty-eight, where the subject site is located. Conceptual infrastructure plans were developed, including state and federal review and environmental clearances. The infrastructure plans were approved by the Colorado Department of Transportation and the Federal Highway Administration in two thousand and seven. LPMD is the metro district responsible for building and maintaining much of the infrastructure associated with Clear Creek Crossing. LPMD acquired the subject parcel in two thousand and eight to fulfill the approved plans. Several parcels, including the subject property, were annexed from unincorporated Jefferson County into the city in two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine. When the city annexes land, they are also required to assign zoning to the property because the city's zoning designations differ from the counties. When City Council approved annexation of the subject parcel in March two thousand and nine, they also approved a zoning designation of Agricultural One. The subject site was the last piece of land required to build a roadway through Clear Creek Crossing from West Thirty-second Avenue to West Forty-fourth Avenue. The A One zoning made sense for the subject parcel at the time because the entire parcel was intended to be dedicated as right-of-way and constructed as a roadway. The two thousand and nine staff report states the intended use of the property is for infrastructure improvements for the completion of Cabela Drive and the new interchange. What was meant to be Cabela Drive is now Clear Creek Drive. The staff report further states because there will be no associated private property development, an annexation agreement has not been required. By two thousand and fourteen, it became apparent that the infrastructure needs associated with Clear Creek Crossing were becoming cost prohibitive. Cabela's sold their land, and the vision for the development evolved from big-box anchors to a mix of uses. The infrastructure designs were formally reevaluated by the city, CDOT, and the Federal Highway Administration, and revised road design and development plans were approved with a phasing plan. This phasing is reflected in the development that exists today. In the current phasing, development was limited to the south side of Clear Creek and only the hook ramp at I seventy was required to be constructed. If the north side of Clear Creek is proposed to be developed as a future phase or if trip generation exceeds a certain threshold on the south side, then additional infrastructure at Highway Fifty-eight will be required, including on the subject parcel. For this reason, the subject parcel remains under the ownership of LPMD, but it has not yet been dedicated as right-of-way, nor have any infrastructure investments been made north of Clear Creek. This zone change is proposed as an interim condition, allowing limited productive use of the property until such time the original intent of the annexation is fulfilled. This is Sheet Two of the annexation map for the subject property from two thousand and nine. The red lines show the boundaries of the annexation and the blue lines show the city's limits. And this is Sheet Three of the same document. The applicant is requesting the property to be rezoned to industrial employment, a Zone District intended to allow for light industrial and commercial uses that support employment. The i.e. zoning is the only Zone District that allows outside storage. As noted previously, the current Zone District, A One, was established at annexation. Surrounding parcels are in Jefferson County and are zoned Industrial One and Plan Development with light and medium-intensity industrial uses. The applicant intends to rezone the property to allow for outdoor storage related to their current business located immediately adjacent to the east. The applicant states that the parcel has been vacant since it was originally annexed and that LPMD is seeking to put the site to use by leasing it to the applicant for outside storage until such time it is needed for right-of-way improvements. In consultation with the city attorney, staff recommends the zone change be conditioned upon the following. No vertical construction would be permitted. Outdoor storage and appropriate screening would be the only permitted uses. And a development agreement running with the land will be required to be recorded with the Zone Change Ordinance to document such use and development limitations and to ensure future dedication of the property as necessary for the originally intended purpose of infrastructure and right-of-way at no cost. The limit on vertical development will help to reinforce the original annexation intent, which stated that there would be no private development. Further, the parcel was never anticipated to be a developable lot. The city would require that LPMD draft and sign the development agreement that would need to include the following elements. Limits on use, limits on permanent development, requirements to dedicate the subject parcel as right-of-way at no charge to the city or CDOT upon the need for infrastructure improvements, and requirements that these conditions run with the land and apply to successors and assigns. This approach allows appropriate economic use of the land while protecting the city's long-term interests and honoring the original intent of the annexation. While conditional zone change are rare in Wheat Ridge, they are not precluded by code, and this unique situation warrants a unique approach. As a requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on February seventh, twenty twenty-four in a virtual Zoom meeting setting. Six people attended the meeting, and the notes from the meeting were included in the staff report. Since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, including fire, water, and sanitation, as well as completed an internal review. We did not receive objections or concerns from internal departments or outside agencies. Before the hearing, the property was posted for fifteen days and letters were sent to occupants and property owners within a six-hundred-foot radius. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the request on April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Staff received no comments from members of the public on Wheat Ridge Speaks prior to this hearing. Staff reviews zone change requests based on several criteria. As described previously, the original intent for the property was for the construction of roadway and of roadway improvements, which would have accommodated the previously planned Cabela's development. The original annexation and zoning assignment to A-one anticipated the Cabela's development being completed. Therefore, no alternative plans for the site were created. The proposed zone change is appropriate in response to a change in conditions in the area. The construction of roadway improvements has not occurred as originally planned and is not anticipated in the near future. And this proposed zone change acknowledges the changed conditions and would allow for a better and more productive use of the land. Additionally, the zone change would enable the land to further achieve the city's current comprehensive plan goals to encourage employment-generating uses in the area by allowing the adjacent property to utilize it for their needs. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the request for the following reasons: The proposed zoning designation promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the community, and will not result in a significant adverse effect on the surrounding area. And the proposed zone change is appropriate in response to a change in character of the area where the construction of roadway improvements is not anticipated at this time. And with the following conditions: No vertical construction is permitted; outdoor storage and appropriate screening are the only permitted uses; and a development agreement running with the land will be required to be recorded with the zone change ordinance to document such use and development limitations, and to ensure future dedication of the property as necessary for the originally intended purpose of infrastructure and right-of-way at no cost. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the time when we would invite the public to speak on this. I have no members of the public signed up to speak, so we will go to questions of council. Once again, if you'd like to thank our staff or anyone for working on this, this is the appropriate time to do that. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Counselor Dozeman, may I have a motion on this item?
Yes, thank you. I move to approve Council Bill number zero nine, two thousand and twenty-four, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at parcel ID thirty-nine, one ninety-three, zero one, zero ten, from agricultural one to industrial employment. On second reading, order it published, that it takes effect fifteen days after final publication, and with the following conditions: One, no vertical construction is permitted; outdoor storage and appropriate screening are the only permitted uses; and two, a development agreement running with the land shall be recorded with the zone change ordinance to document such use and development limitations, and to ensure future dedication of the property as necessary for the originally intended purpose of infrastructure and of right-of-way at no cost.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Ohm. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, including Councilmember Dozeman. Motion carries.
Thank you. We will go to Agenda Item Number Four. Mayor Protem Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill number ten dash two thousand and twenty-four, an ordinance appointing Jonathan Lucero as Presiding Municipal Court Judge and approving a municipal judge agreement, sorry, a municipal judge services agreement. At issue, the city's Home Rule Charter provides for appointment of the municipal court judge for a term of two years. Judge Randall has resigned from his position, and the City Council wishes to fill this position by appointing Jonathan Lucero as the new Presiding Municipal Court Judge.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance on first reading. Set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. May I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill number ten dash ten dash two thousand and twenty-four, an ordinance appointing Jonathan Lucero as Presiding Municipal Court Judge and approving a municipal judge services agreement on first reading. Order it published. Public hearing set for Monday, June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, at six-thirty P.M. in City Council chambers, and that it take effect upon adoption at second reading.
Second.
We have a motion, and I'm going to give that to Counselor Dozeman, if you will. Would the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, including Councilmember Dozeman. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We will now go to Agenda Item Number Five. Counselor Snell, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Resolution number twenty-nine dash two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution approving the adoption of a land acknowledgement statement for the city of Wheat Ridge. At issue, the Wheat Ridge Land Acknowledgement Committee has dedicated the past two years to extensive research and collaboration with various tribal leaders. As a result, they have thoughtfully crafted a land acknowledgement statement for the city of Wheat Ridge. This resolution supports the formal adoption of this statement.
Thank you very much. This will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
We do. Karen O'Donnell, our Parks and Recreation Director, who led this effort, is here this evening. She has a guest, but I'll let her introduce the guest.
Hey, Director O'Donnell.
Thank you, City Manager Goff. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I'm Karen O'Donnell, the Director of Parks and Recreation, and I'm one of the staff liaisons for the Land Acknowledgement Committee. And I don't know why it comes up wonky. It's nice on my screen, but it's wonky on yours. But that's okay. We'll get through it. I wanted to acknowledge the members that are here today. Almost our whole committee is here. Nikki Larson is unfortunately unable to come this evening, but wanted to be here. Kathleen Martel, raise your hand. We have Morgan Richards here. Susan Bennett is another staff liaison, and then Jenny Snell is a member with us as well. And our past members that participated early on are Deb Bolig, Teresa Sheldon, Karen Stanley, and Dawn Wood. So I wanted to provide a little bit of a recap on the process because this has been something that we've been working on for a long time. So this topic was initially brought up at a Wheat Ridge one-on-one gathering several years ago, and we came to City Council in October of two thousand and twenty-one, which is a long time ago, and it might feel like, gosh, why did this take so long? So I just want to acknowledge that the process took so long because we had volunteers that served on this committee that took this responsibility very seriously, and they wanted to get it right, and they put in a lot of work. And we had lots of meetings and lots of discussion, and we'll go through, you know, some folks that are considered experts in the field that we met with. So there was a lot of work that went into this to get to the point where we really felt like this is where we wanted to be. So I just wanted to mention that. So the committee members were recruited from the Race and Equity Task Force, the Historical Society, the Cultural Commission, and Parks and Recreation Commission. And the first committee meeting was held in March of two thousand and twenty-two. So we had many, many meetings over the last couple of years, and we had a field trip to History Colorado where we met with a historian, Sam Bach, there. And he's been a wonderful resource throughout this process, but on that day, he took us through some of the exhibits there and talked with us through how other cities have done this work, and just provided a lot of great information for us. We also connected with State Senator Jesse Danielson, who's done a lot of work on this with this type of topic, a variety of different things, serving Indigenous communities. And so she was a great help and really talked us through the process, and that's part of the reason why it took so long, is she said, you know, you're going to want to reach out to all the different tribes, and you need to give them time to respond, and you can't expect a response from everyone, but you need to provide the opportunity. So she gave us a lot of guidance as well. So we updated City Council in September of two thousand and twenty-two. Many of you were here for that, and some were not, so I wanted to make sure we provided all of the information. We drafted and sent emails with a formal letter attached to the forty-eight contemporary tribal nations. That was in December of two thousand and twenty-three. Those letters were signed by Councilmember Hoppy as one of the original supporters. She and Counselor Nosler Beck were the ones that brought this forward as an initiative for us to work on. And so when we communicate with tribes, it really needs to come from your level, which is why the letter was addressed from Councilmember Hoppy, and then she essentially gave permission to me as a staff liaison to really communicate with tribes. So that's the way we approached the communication. We sent additional communication to the tribes that are specifically connected to Wheat Ridge, and that's the Northern Cheyenne Tribe, the Northern Arapaho Tribe, the Cheyenne and Arapaho Tribes, the Mountain Yute Tribe, the Southern Yute Tribe, and Northern Yute Tribe. When we reached out, we did request specific feedback on our draft land acknowledgement statement, but we also asked for their feedback on our associated action plan. So if you recall from the last meeting, we talked about how a lot of the guidance we were given is that you don't want to just come up with a land acknowledgement statement and leave it at that. It's considered a performative measure. We really have to continue developing relationships and moving this work forward. So that's when we created an action plan, and we shared that with you during that last meeting, but we will go through it again this evening. So we shared that with the tribes and asked for their feedback on that as well. We received and incorporated feedback from four different individuals that we reached out to, and those individuals were associated with the Northern Cheyenne Tribe, the Cheyenne and Arapaho Tribes, and Wichita and affiliated tribes. Currently, we're in the process of scheduling time with a member of the Cheyenne and Arapaho Tribe to begin relationship building and discuss future actions. So there was one of the individuals that responded said, "We'd really like to connect with you, to talk further about your action plan, and provide some ideas and make some connections." So we're working through that at this point with that individual. We also did the Mother Patch Dedication at Happiness Gardens in February. Several of you were in attendance for that. And we've been developing connections with Indigenous consultants, and we'd like to continue with those connections as we move forward with the action plan and implementation. The draft land acknowledgement statement that we will share with you this evening has been read at several events throughout the city. And so what's next? This is our land acknowledgement statement, and Member Kathleen Martel is going to read it for you.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Karen. Okay. We pause to acknowledge that we are on the traditional territory of the Tete-Hestahe, the Hananehe, and the Nunchi, commonly named the Cheyenne, the Arapaho, and the Yute. We further recognize the forty-eight contemporary tribal nations who lived on the lands that make up the state of Colorado. Members of many tribal nations lived here specifically because the land took care of them. It was also the site of trade, hunting, gathering, and healing for many tribal nations. As inhabitants of these spaces, we honor the tribal nation's interconnected human relationship to land, air, and water. The expansion of industrialized civilization on this land came at a dire cost to these tribes and their descendants. As residents of Wheat Ridge, we commit to reconciling our problematic history by building authentic and respectful connections with members of tribal nations. May this acknowledgement demonstrate a commitment to working to dismantle ongoing legacies of oppression and inequities, and recognize the current and future contributions of Indigenous communities in Wheat Ridge. As we move through our community, give pause to connect with the land that you are currently standing on. Now introduce yourself spiritually. Build a relationship with Mother Earth that provides for all our relations. Please take a moment to honor these ancestral grounds and celebrate the resilience and strength shown by people who are Indigenous. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. So where do we go from here? So this is the action plan that I was referring to earlier. This isn't an all-encompassing list. This is what we brainstormed several months ago at this point, and what we've shared with the tribal connections that we've made. So these are just some ideas. We don't anticipate completing every last one of these, and we might add to this list once we have further communications with tribal members. But just to give you an idea, the initial piece was establishing relationships with tribes connected to Wheat Ridge, which we have begun that work. Finalize and begin using this land acknowledgement statement that we are sharing with you this evening and hoping to have adopted. And with that, once that statement is adopted, some ideas are to read at City Council meetings, board and commission meetings, special events, ribbon cuttings. Include an employee board and commission onboarding. Include in Wheat Ridge one-on-one. Share with businesses and schools and encourage them to create their own. Include educational information on the city website, social media, link on an email signature, QR codes, resources with pronunciations, because as you can imagine, if you're thinking of reading that statement, that's the hardest part, is learning the pronunciations. But struggling through that is okay. That's one thing that we've learned, is we have to allow ourselves grace because we're doing the right thing, and sometimes we make mistakes, but we learn and we grow. Support educational programming and storytelling. Create a toolkit to educate particularly those with different worldviews. We know that there are people in the community that probably don't agree with this and think it's silly that we're even doing it, and that's okay. We like the idea of creating a toolkit to be able to share and help people learn and grow. Donations and fundraisers for tribes, that's an idea that we've thought about. Signage in parks, on trails, in facilities. Sponsor a tribal athletic team. The individual that we've connected with said, "Hey, I know people that I can connect you with if you want to move forward with that initiative." So making those connections. Renaming streets or parks, if that's necessary. Considering opportunities to incorporate into new park spaces. Provide an opportunity for Indigenous individuals in Wheat Ridge, in the community, to engage or contribute through an opt-in process. Connect with Indigenous artists for cultural events, exhibits, and public art opportunities as they arise in the city. Create a traveling display. Work with other municipalities, as well as Wheat Ridge Boards, Commissions, and Task Force. So again, not an all-encompassing list, just what we've brainstormed over the last few years, and it's a good starting point for us to, again, not make this a performative action in just a statement. So how do we accomplish this? Our solution in our most recent communications as a committee was that, you know, upon adoption of this statement this evening, the Land Acknowledgement Committee itself has really completed their originally identified task. So how do we move forward with that action plan? Our idea is that we would work with the idea committee and provide that opportunity in that future that Councilmember Snell was talking about today, how that committee is coming into fruition this summer. It's a great opportunity. We already had members on our land acknowledgement committee that had applied to participate on that. So rather than adding one more thing to their plate and spreading our volunteers thin, and we do have, these are, the people on this committee are highly active volunteers. They're involved in a lot of boards, commissions, committees throughout the city. So really combining two things that go together really nicely, and having those folks, if interested, apply for and participate on the idea committee, and move this action forward through that means. So again, the committee overlap already exists. We have great committee members that are spread thin, so it's a better use of time and energy. And then the staff liaisons, both Susan and myself, have agreed to assist with that committee in any capacity to help move this forward as well. So what is our ask of you tonight? The first and most important thing is approving the resolution that will adopt this land acknowledgement statement that this committee has worked so hard to draft, and then support the future direction of this important work, which again means this committee kind of folds into the idea committee and continues to move that action plan forward. And consider how you, City Council, would like to utilize this statement, whether you want to read that at a meeting, at meetings, once a month, every meeting, however you choose. I'd leave that to you to ponder and determine what you would like to do, but we just want you to consider that. And with that, any questions?
Okay, thank you. Before we go to questions from council, we will offer this members of the public to speak. I have no one signed up to speak, so we'll go to questions or comments from council. Counselor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. And I would like to recognize the obvious hard work and perseverance that went into this process and the creation of this document. The only question I have is whether it creates any sort of fiscal obligation for the city.
That is a great question. There's nothing, there's no obligation that is required. I think the one thing that we've talked about is creating a small budget through the idea committee to be able to bring in Indigenous consultants to help us move this forward, and, you know, pay them a fair wage to be a consultant, which we would for anybody else. And potentially, you know, if we decide on other events or things that are associated with this action plan, you know, if we put signage in parks, certainly there's a cost to those sorts of things, but nothing required. It would just be future, I'd say, smaller initiatives that we'd like to move forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Weber?
Thank you for your hard work on all of this. No, I really, I mean that very sincerely. As you were speaking, I was thinking about how much I would like to be able to print out that, and so there might be some really low-hanging fruit here of just putting it out there on the Wheat Ridge website so that, but, you know, maybe the date that it was adopted and sort of, because I was just thinking that would be such a nice thing at the farm for people to walk in and see that acknowledgement, but it might be nice for anybody. but it might be nice for any business to, or person in their home. So that would just be a thought. And please keep in the pronunciations, because I think that was really helpful. So thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick acknowledgement of the Land Acknowledgement Committee and the work and time that folks have put into this. It was a long process, as it should have been, because this is the right thing to do. And there wasn't an easy path, but it was the right thing to do. And we led with our hearts, and we asked questions, and I am in awe of all of you because so many of the folks that were involved with this also, as Director O'Donnell said, are also involved in a lot of other things with our city. And they also have families, and they also have things that they like to do. And so all of those things, anytime you're giving your time to something with our city, it means so, so much, and I'm very grateful for that. I'm grateful that our city has a land acknowledgement statement and glad to be a part of it. But thank you all so much. It means a lot, and this is the right thing to do. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Director O'Donnell, and the idea committee. I know it's been a long process and staff to go through this, and I think it's good to have, you know, have the conversation, you know, to recognize, you know, what's been done in the past and to, you know, try to heal the community and also educate the community. I would be very supportive of having, you know, some signage around some, you know, areas. You know, it could be around, you know, our Table Lake New Pass or somewhere around the Clitter Creek that just, you know, beyond just having the statement read, that we start to identify that, yes, you know, this type of area or whatever that entity is was, you know, had Indigenous people on it, and just trying to understand and make that connection. I think that's very, and I've seen that in other states as well. And I can't pronounce the names, but, and I think it's helpful if there's anything that does show you how to pronounce those names, but I just think it becomes, gives us more awareness of that cultural identity. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from council before I ask for a motion? Seeing none, Councilor Snell, may I have a motion on agenda item number five?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution number 29-2024, a resolution approving the adoption of a land acknowledgement statement for the city of Wheat Ridge.
There's a motion and a second by Councilor Ohm. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, including Councilmember Dozeman. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'm allowed to say thank you very much for coming in with this at this time. So we appreciate your work and to bring this forward. So thank you. Okay, we will now go to City Managers Matters. Mr. Goff.
Nothing else this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll accept that and go to City Attorney's Matters. Mr. Goff.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Well, you guys are on a roll. I want to go to elected officials matters and start with Councilor Dozeman.
Nothing tonight. Sorry, I can't be there in person. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for joining us online. We'll go to Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to take another moment to say thank you for our Pride proclamation, our Juneteenth proclamation, our land acknowledgement statement. I must acknowledge some of my colleagues who are here in the audience from Edgewater Pride. That is an organization that started five years ago, and I've been very lucky to be on the board with them and be involved in creating that celebration recognition in their city. And it has grown exponentially every year. And there is discussion of creating a West Side event, a West Side Pride, so that all of our smaller communities on the west side of Denver can participate and celebrate and recognize that. Also have to just share some excitement around the All-America City Celebration that we all, we got to participate in on Friday. Incredibly moving and important, and Wheat Ridge got our Lifetime Achievement Award. I'm very happy to be a part of that and very in awe and just enjoy and recognize my co-collaborators on that. So that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing is I would like to remind everybody out there in TV and YouTube land that the ballots have gone out. And if you've gotten yours in, congratulations. If not, fill it out and turn it in.
Thank you very much. Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a really great experience at Little Brazil a couple weeks ago, and I just wanted to tell everybody what a great place that was. I had took my family there. My parents flew down from Montana for my daughter's graduation. And it is, we were so lucky to have something like that, that it had some live music. And that's something that I really feel is important to our community and just, you know, how warm and welcoming that establishment is to everybody. Please support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Snell and Councilor Weaver.
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protim Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge everybody who had worked on all of the things that we had going on tonight. There's so many awesome things going on in Wheat Ridge. Somebody who's been here roughly 40-ish years now. The city has changed a little bit and considering the history of Wheat Ridge and why we were incorporated a long, long time ago, to see that is really fun and really enjoy that. So thank you to everybody who's worked so hard on making Wheat Ridge a really inclusive place. And that includes all of the citizens, whether they're directly on a committee or not. Speaking of that, this weekend, I wanted to thank our Sustainable Applewood's community group that put on the community garage sale and helped get everybody going with that. I can walk through my house, and I can get into my basement, and my wife's going to have some convulsions. We're going to have to go to some therapy and get rid of some stuff, but she's, so we're doing well with that. So I appreciate everybody in Applewood who came out and bought some of our stuff and all of that. And as Councilor Ohm was saying, Little Brazil is fantastic. I don't know if anybody saw it this weekend, but Carro Plus posted that they are starting their construction here very soon, so they should be open. So that's really exciting. One of the really cool things about the restaurants on 38th Avenue is how much they cheer for each other, all the owners, all the restaurants are out there, and they're really excited for each other. So we should support them as much as we can. So get out and support in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to thank all the citizens that joined me on Saturday morning for a coffee with the mayor. We had a really robust group and a great discussion, so thank you for coming. We'll meet again next month on the second Saturday, if you can join us. I want to, I was honored to be part of the group that went down to the All-American City Award at downtown Denver this last Friday night and participated in helping celebrate Wheat Ridge to get a Lifetime Achievement Award. We do great things in our city. I think you've heard some of them tonight, but we have great things that come up all the time and a great group of citizens that are working on them. I want to, the Ives Affordable Housing Project at 44th and Wadsworth is going to have a ribbon cutting this Friday. We want to welcome them into our community. It's a great project. I want to thank the, we were Sustainable Neighborhoods. I came to Panorama Park about a week and a half ago and created a really beautiful zero-scape garden there and have doing great things in our community to bring people together. So I want to thank them for that. And we, let's see, we are at about the end of this meeting. We will have a study session one week from tonight. And we hope everyone drives safely through our streets. We've got, schools are either out or just about out, and we'll have, hopefully, kids playing outside. And please drive carefully through our city and be careful and safe yourself. With that, we will stand adjourned.